You have 11?
Yes.
You have 11?
Yes.
So we take the quorum.
What's quorum?
Sorry, the quorum. Okay. Five. Good morning, Councilor. Yes, she's on. One, two, three, six. Okay, so you have one. So you're going to... But it's not nice for you. You have to wait a minute. Whenever he's ready. We have six, and we need six. We're good. Uh, Councilor Pearson and Councilor Van Der Beek, correct there? She is. She is. Uh, yeah, I'm not sure, but yes, she's on.
Well, it's past 9:30, and the clerks have advised me we have quorums, so I'm going to call the meeting to order. So members of the public advised that our meetings are webcast live by the City Hamilton, temporarily archived on the City website. Other individuals and media may also be audibly and/or visually recording the meeting. All electronic devices are to be switched to a non-audible function during committee meetings. Now, today marks the first day of electronic voting at our council in standing committee meetings. The committee will be voting electronically on any decisions being made. Voting results will be visible during the meeting and will appear in the minutes. Now, a clerk advised me we don't need electronic voting on anything to be received, only for when we're making decisions, and I'll alert you when we need electronic voting. So there are no ceremonial activities, so, Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda? Alicia?
Yes, Mr. Chair, there are changes to the agenda. Delegation request 6.1 from Susan Mammel from the Hamilton-Halton Home Builders Association, respecting the approval of water servicing for development, has been withdrawn from the agenda, and we also have an added delegation request from Sunny Ross, respecting charging stations for electronic scooters.
And that's also for a future meeting?
Correct.
Okay. So, um, I need a mover and a second on approving the agenda. Move by Marula, second by, uh... I need that. Second by Counselor Pauls. So, uh, I guess we need electronic voting on this, so we need to... So you just touch the screen where it says yes or no? And if they're not, if they're absent, it just, we just don't use them? Okay, so that's carried. So let's go on now to Communications. Letter from the Hamilton Chamber of Commerce, respecting matters of the Public Works, and a motion to be received. Anybody want to move to receive it? Moved by, um, John JP Denkle.
Approval of the minutes and declarations of interest.
Oh, you're right. You don't need a motion on it, any declarations of interest. Seeing none, let's go back to Communications. So it was moved by JP, uh...
We have the minutes as well, Counselor.
I'm puzzled. We don't, is this here we don't need a motion for receiving communications, correct?
Correct, Counselor.
So what are you looking for to vote on?
Just the approval of the minutes, second or first.
Okay, so you need a motion to approve the minutes, sorry. New system. Van Der Beek, second by Marula, all in favor? Oh, the vote. That carries. Okay, let's move on to Communications now. Just need a motion to receive. Moved by Van Der Beek, second by Pearson, all in favor, carried. Let's move on to delegations requests. So 6.1 has been withdrawn. Uh, there's 6.2. This is from the MTO. It looks like they want to do a full closure of 403, which is going to be interesting, but it's for a future meeting, so a motion to approve the delegation. Moved by Farr, second by Marula, electronic voting. That carries. And then Sunny Ross, respecting charging stations for electronic scooters. Um, yeah, I guess it's just approval of a motion. We're not going for a staff report yet, just to hear the delegations, whatever, moving. So moved by Pearson, second by Van Der Beek. All in favor? Carry. Okay, let's move on to consent items, and there's various consent, uh, item minutes, item 7.1A through 7.1H are minutes from various advisory committees. Just need a motion to receive. Move, yes. Want to speak to one, Counselor Van Der Beek?
Yes, please.
Go ahead.
I'm not on. Oh, yeah, I am now. Um, I don't mind moving it, but I have a question, and that is, why, is there some way we can get these minutes sooner? Like, this is May to September, and where are October and November?
Madam Clerk, you want to take that?
We just do them as they come.
Okay, maybe, uh, General Manager, can you either answer the question or direct it to the right staff person that can answer the question? These are taking nine months to get here.
Mr. Chair, I don't know. There's a variety of minutes that are here from the different committees, so, uh, I'll take that back to my leadership group and find out why it's taking so long and try to improve on that.
Thank you. So, but these minutes are all the Hamilton Cycling Committee, May, June, July, August, and September. It just seems like, like even if there was something there we wanted to mention or comment on, it's for May, June, July, August, and September.
Mr. Chair, I think I'm going to get some help here now, so...
That's great.
You just identify who you are, please.
I'm Rachel Johnson. I'm the staff person for this Hamilton Cycling Committee. Uh, this is a new role for me, which I've taken over from Daryl Bender, um, and that's part of the reason for the delay in the minutes, is a number of staffing changes on our end, a new, a general manager, and a new manager, and myself in a new position, but moving forward, we'll have them coming much more regularly.
Ms. Van Der Beek?
So, thank you. So will they come monthly, then, as they have their meeting? Will the months before come?
Turn your microphone on, yeah.
Through the chair, hopefully.
Okay, thank you. I don't mind moving to receive.
You're moving all of them, and it's just a motion to receive, so there's no electronic voting required. That was seconded by Counselor Pearson, all in favor? That's carried. Public hearings and delegations. Susie Scott, respecting installation of tiger tails stop signs, approved by the Public Works Committee in December the 10th. Is Susie here? There you are. Come on down, Susie. The podium is yours.
Good morning. My name is Susie Scott, and I'm accompanying here today...
Susie, can you just move the microphone over to... That's it, thank you.
Better?
Much better.
I'm accompanied by my neighbors, Roseanne Trimmer, Emily McLaughlin, and Becky Smith, who all live on my street. The event that eventually brought me here today occurred on a lovely day last September. I live on Balmoral Avenue South, just a couple blocks north of the mountain. The lawns on my street were still all green, and so were the leaves on the trees, both on my street and those on the hillsides of the mountain, providing what had always been a calm, restful, peaceful vista. But not on that day. On that day, right in the middle of all this peace and quiet were the alarmingly bright construction-orange tiger tails that had been attached to the stop sign at the nearest intersection, just houses away from my own, between me and the mountain. I immediately set out to discover why such horribly bright, ugly signs had been put up. I talked to my counselor's office and learned that these signs were the result of the Crown Point Traffic Calming Study. I talked to someone in traffic engineering several times. The answer to my question about why was always, "It's about safety." I started calling traffic engineering departments in other municipalities to see if they too were using such signage. The answer from every city I contacted was a resounding no. I also managed to get copies of that traffic calming study, done by citizens near my neighborhood, as well as the response to those concerns by traffic engineering. To my surprise, I discovered that the issue the citizens' group had laid out for the intersection was in complete error. The problem was said to be that the intersection needed a two-way stop. The intersection has had a two-way stop since time immemorial. Traffic Engineering's take on the intersection ended with the words, "No problem discovered." Yet on June 18th of last year, a work order had been signed to attach the tiger tails to the stop signs despite no problem discovered. I continued my research, learning more than I had ever realized existed about traffic engineering. I learned that it is the Ontario Traffic Council that sets the uniform standards for road signage in our province and publishes these standards in the Ontario Traffic Manual, the so-called bible of traffic engineers. The Ontario Traffic Manual is not perhaps what one thinks of as a manual, rather it is, it is 15 books, some of which are over 300 pages long. I discovered that the Ontario Traffic Manual standard for using construction-orange signage limits its use to, well, construction. As I saw more and more of these tiger tails being used across the city, I decided to make my views and the knowledge I had gained known to this committee, which is why I'm here today. However, after I wrote and submitted the materials that you have in front of you, and I suppose after Traffic Engineering read them, I was informed that the Director of Roads and Traffic, Mr. Edward Soldo, who is here today, who had taken up his position at the end of July, long after the work order for tiger tails had been issued on my street, realized a mistake had been made. The signs were not in compliance with the Ontario Traffic Manual and therefore must be removed. I understand that the ones on my street will be the very first to be removed, which I suppose is a fitting end to the hours of phone calls and research I have made. But this outcome, although so very welcomed by me and my neighbors, raises other serious questions, which is why I have prepared an addendum.
Just hand it to the clerks, I'll distribute it.
I've prepared an addendum to my presentation, which contains the questions that arise, such as, "How did this happen? And how much has this mistake cost the taxpayers of Hamilton?" It is my expectation that this committee will also, once answers to these questions, and will order a full review of this matter. That concludes my statement.
Just two quick questions for the benefit of the committee, then I'll go to questions. And the first question is, is this, is one of these stop signs at this intersection new? Did it go from a two-way to a three-way or a four-way?
No, it was always a two-way stop.
Okay, so there's no change to the stopping, because typically tiger tails are installed when there's a new stop sign goes up?
Yeah, no...
And so that wasn't the case here?
These were, and, and what the Crown Point Study, nobody, I guess, had checked, and the Crown Point Study, it wasn't listed under fail to stop, it was listed under require stop signs.
Okay, and where is it located, the stop?
Balmoral and Justine.
Okay.
And, uh, there have always been two stop signs there.
Okay, so I'm going to go to questions now, and we have Counselor Nan for the first question.
Good morning, through the chair, thank you. Uh, no questions, but I did just want to acknowledge that we had a great meeting, and I just want to acknowledge the resident-led leadership here in researching and finding out the right, uh, response for the city to be taking and to help our city come into compliance. I'm, I'm glad staff have been eager to, and quick to respond to you, once the clarity became evident that the stop sign, tiger tail that we're using were incorrect ones, that in fact the city should be using red and white ones versus the temporary construction ones, which are red and orange. So I just want to thank you and the other residents that have been championing this. Um, it's rare that you, you know, celebrate these kinds of victories for, for residents in the, in terms of traffic-based, um, solutions, so I just want to say thank you for helping our city come into compliance, and thanking staff as well.
Counselor, so is the, is the tiger tail been removed now?
No. I saw him this morning.
Yet, not yet, but I'll pass that off on to staff. Edward?
Okay. If Counselor Whitehead...
My husband wants to know when it is that I'm going to sign up for the Mohawk course in traffic engineering. He figures I can test out of a couple semesters at this point.
Counselor Whitehead?
Uh, I want to thank you for making your presentation, and it's always my, been my concern, um, that we have a bit of an ad hoc approach to these issues based on, um, loud voices within the community making demands without ensuring that we're complying with all the appropriate bodies. So, uh, for clarifications, am I understanding, then, that this was a direct request by a community group for this particular tiger tail?
Uh, no. Um, it's in your materials. The, uh, the Crown Point Traffic Calming Committee presented their report 14 months ago to this body, uh, and then you all voted to, uh, give it to Traffic Engineering so they could go through each of the problems identified, and, and they were supposed to get back to this committee with, um, with their solutions, or saying there isn't a problem, along with the costs, but they haven't done that in 14 months. Meanwhile, they did look at these situations, and again, it's in your materials, there's a column that shows what they did about each of these things. So the problem at my particular intersection was that it needed a two-way stop. It's had one forever. So that was wrong, right from the beginning. Someone came and analyzed the intersection and noted that it already had a two-way stop, that there were good sightlines, and the last words are, "No problem discovered." You move one column over, work order issued June 18th for tiger tails, and I go, "What?" Like, and they're so ugly. And the reason they're ugly is because, yeah, they're construction-orange, and they're supposed to be ugly, so when you're driving down a highway you're familiar with, suddenly there's an orange sign, you know that something's changing here, and you can't just go on automatic pilot. But they don't belong in a residential neighborhood, and they don't belong where there's no construction going on.
And my last question is, um, is my understanding you're looking for a motion to direct staff to review, uh, in the process in which, uh, this happened, to, to ensure that, um, we move forward in, in compliance with all regulatory bodies?
Well, that's true. My questions are laid out in the addendum that was passed out. Uh, one of the big questions...
Counselor, I tend to ask for a motion to refer the questions to staff.
Perfect, that's, I just want to make sure that's what we're going to do. Thank you. That's what, and I was hoping that was the expectation as well.
But, but it's not, uh, Counselor Whitehead, it is not just, sort of, "How did this happen? How much did it cost us?" I've looked at those things, and the brackets on the back of them are properly for a permanent sign, stainless steel. I estimate that the brackets alone cost about 50 bucks, plus the signs themselves, plus the labor, and now we're going to take them down. So how much did this cost me and all of you who live in the city of Hamilton for this mistake? And how was it made? I mean, every traffic engineer, it's like Traffic Engineering 101, is, construction-orange is used for temporary conditions, 99% of them are construction. So how did this happen? How much did it cost all of us?
I appreciate it, and it's my understanding that, uh, we will be entertaining a motion to, uh, to review that process. Thank you.
I, I do want to note that Mr. Soldo, who is now the Director of Roads and Traffic, as I said in my presentation, but in case you missed it, he wasn't here for this. He came on the end of July. All of this ordering the tiger ta... He was probably here when they were put up, but he didn't, he didn't order them, so I think he's going to correct this problem for us all.
Perfect. Counselor Pauls?
My presentation, I just want to know, is there any other places these signs are? Any on the mountain, or is it just, uh...
Oh, no, they're, they're everywhere.
They're everywhere?
In the downtown core, they're in Flamborough, I saw one in Dundas, and my favorite, in quotes, is in Counselor Marula's ward, because I live near there, and at the corner of Justine, which is a, but, Justine and Edgemont, is a four-way stop. So in Hamilton, that means there are eight stop signs, because Hamilton doesn't just put one on the right-hand side, we put them on both sides. So there are eight stop signs, and that was one of the Crown Points that, that fail to stop was a problem, so there are now eight tiger tails at that intersection, and even as you're going through, because it's only a few blocks from my own street, as you're going through, you only see the tiger tails facing you, but as you get into the intersection, there are all these big signs, and you can see the back of them, right? The metal, and it feels like you're in a fortress. It's amazing.
So I'm wondering, are we, um, voting, taking them all down, or...
Let me just put that question to Mr. Soldo. Edward, is your intent to take them all down, or just this location, because they're installed incorrectly?
Thank you. Through the chair to the Counselor. Uh, maybe if I could just provide some context to this. The issue really, when it comes to these stop signs, is their compliance, not that the, the need for stop signs, more about enhancing the compliance of people actually stopping there. Uh, I want to thank Counselor Nan and the residents for bringing this to our attention. Staff has reviewed the standards that we currently have been using. It is a very old historical standard. Tiger tails are a tool used to, to increase stop sign awareness, uh, really to help improve compliance at those locations and to improve pedestrian safety, so that there is an, an expectation, there's an expectation from pedestrians that it's safe to cross, and this helps with that compliance. It also helps with non-residents in that area, who aren't aware, potentially, that there is a stop sign at that location. Uh, they, they provide a positive guidance, which is a benefit to safety. So staff have reviewed the current standard, uh, which has been, as I said, around for a long time. They are, stop signs are a regulatory sign, and they have to be either black on white or red on white, uh, so I would agree that the color being used currently for our tiger tails is, is incorrect, shouldn't be orange, should be, uh, red on white, uh, and we are updating the standard. Uh, in terms of our go-forward process from here, what we're looking to do is replace them, the current ones that are currently out there, the red, the red and orange ones, with the red and white, because the same issue still exists. We're trying to raise compliance at these stop signs. So what we'll be doing is going back, seeing where they're located, what the costs are in terms of, uh, changing them out, and we'll be slowly, as we move forward, replacing them. Any new locations where we would actually put these signs in will comply with the new standard.
Counselor Pauls?
Um, yeah, I, just so, I don't know if there's any in my area, and I haven't noticed, that's all, but I do notice, I think they are ugly, and I agree with you, so we should do something.
Well, you know, what started out was my just, like, "What? Here's this beautiful green mountain and the trees, and all of a sudden these bright orange things right in the middle of my..." And I went, "What?" Um, and they're just ugly, and so my original presentation ends with, "Just how ugly do we want Hamilton to become by putting these all over the place?" But then, as I did my research, I started understanding, "Yeah, they are ugly, because they're only for construction." So, but you probably have some near you, they're going up, they've been going up everywhere. But, Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Mr. Soldo, which is, when this, my particular intersection was reviewed, and you can all read it in the materials I provided for you, Traffic Engineering's take was, "No problem." So why would you even replace ugly construction-orange signs, tiger tails, with red and white ones?
I think the proper thing to do, because we're, generally, we don't allow questions to staff.
Okay.
But what we can do is add that as a, as a sixth point.
I think it is the last question on that addendum.
On your letter to you, we'll make sure that gets amended when we ask for it to be referred to, it'll probably go to Edward, or Dan, you have a comment on that?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair, thanks. And no, not specifically on the comment, I did want to take the opportunity, while Ms. Scott was in, at the podium, to thank her for this. I know in Public Works, we're going to get it wrong periodically, but it shouldn't take the amount of effort that Ms. Scott had to put into this to get our attention, so I want to apologize to her and, uh, and, uh, thank her for putting all the effort that she put into it.
Well, fortunately, she, she's a good researcher, by the sounds of things.
I, I like learning stuff, so this has been good.
Okay, so I think what we'll do, then, we're going to add a sixth request, rather than have Edward answer this straight on today, make it in the staff report coming back, that, uh, if you're going to replace them with the, um, red and white, black, red and white, is that necessary? I think that was the question that, uh, the, the sixth walk-on question that the delegate had. And, um, I see I have Counselor Jackson up here yet, and then Maria, Counselor Pearson, so Counselor Jackson?
Not for the delegation, after the delegation is received.
After the delegation is, okay. Counselor Pearson, the same, or do you want to, do you have a question for the resident?
Just questioning to your amendment, Mr. Chairman, and, um, that it's going to look at the replacement, but it's the replacement as far as this particular location, correct? Or all of them?
I think it's all.
We're going to look at all of them throughout the whole city? I'd certainly want to be involved in that, because I can tell you, yes, there's issues with tiger tails, but where I'm being requested them, I'm not getting concerns, but people want them, because, just as Mr. Soldo said, there's people that don't even see the stop signs. I don't know what more to put on these corners. I have starbursts, I have tiger tails, and there's still running stops, but I want to be careful that if we have to change them, that's fine, but I want to be sure that we still have some avenue of more presentation on a stop sign.
Okay, so that's why, again, I think it's important, Edward, that we add a sixth request when we do the referral to you, to say, uh, "Is it necessary to replace with red and white rather than black and red?" And, uh, and we'll make that amendment, and I think Counselor Whitehead said he wanted to move it. So I have no more, oh, I do have some more now. Counselor Marula, to the delegate, a question to the delegate or for staff?
Yeah, but he wanted to do it after the delegation was received.
...the intersection and noted that it already had a two-way stop, that there were good sightlines, and the last words are, "No problem discovered." You move one column over, work order issued June 18th for tiger tails, and I go, "What?" Like, and they're so ugly. And the reason they're ugly is because, yeah, they're construction orange, and they're supposed to be ugly. So when you're driving down a highway you're familiar with, suddenly there's an orange sign, you know that something's changing here, and you can't just go on automatic pilot. But they don't belong in a residential neighborhood, and they don't belong where there's no construction going on.
And my last question is, is my understanding you're looking for a motion to direct staff to review in the process in which this happened to ensure that we move forward in compliance with all regulatory bodies?
Well, that's true. My questions are laid out in the addendum that was passed out.
Counselor, I tend to ask for a motion to refer questions to staff.
Perfect. I just want to make sure that's what we're going to do. Thank you. And I was hoping that was the expectation as well.
But it's not, Counselor Whitehead, it is not just, sort of, how did this happen? How much did it cost us? I've looked at those things, and the brackets on the back of them are properly for a permanent sign, stainless steel. I estimate that the brackets alone cost about $50 bucks, plus the signs themselves, plus the labor, and now we're going to take them down. So how much should this cost me and all of you who live in the city of Hamilton for this mistake? And how was it made? I mean, every traffic engineer, it's like Traffic Engineering 101, is construction orange is used for temporary conditions, 99% of them are construction. So how did this happen? How much did it cost all of us?
I appreciate it, and it's my understanding that we will be entertaining a motion to review that process. Thank you.
I do want to note that Mr. Soldo, who is now the Director of Roads and Traffic, as I said in my presentation, but in case you missed it, he wasn't here for this. He came on the end of July. All of this ordering the tiger tails, he was probably here when they were put up, but he didn't, he didn't order them, so I think he's going to correct this problem for us all.
Perfect. Counselor Pauls.
My presentation, I just want to know, is there any other places these signs are? Any on the mountain, or is it just?
Oh, no. They're everywhere.
They're everywhere?
In the downtown core, they're in Flamborough, I saw one in Dundas, and my favorite, in quotes, is in Counselor Marula's ward, because I live near there, and at the corner of Justine, which is a, Justine and Edgemont, is a four-way stop. So in Hamilton, that means there are eight stop signs, because Hamilton doesn't just put one on the right-hand side, we put them on both sides. So there are eight stop signs, and that was one of the crown points that failed to stop was a problem. So there are now eight tiger tails at that intersection, and even as you're going through, because it's only a few blocks from my own street, as you're going through, you only see the tiger tails facing you, but as you get into the intersection, there are all these big signs, and you can see the back of them, right? The metal. And it feels like you're in a fortress. It's amazing.
So I'm wondering, are we voting taking them all down?
Let me just put that question to Mr. Soldo. Is your intent to take them all down, or just this location, because they're installed incorrectly?
Through the chair to the counselor. Maybe if I could just provide some context to this. Issue really, when it comes to these stop signs, is their compliance. Not that the need for stop signs is more about enhancing the compliance of people actually stopping there. I want to thank Counselor Nan and the resident for bringing this to our attention. Staff has reviewed the standards that we currently have been using. It is a very old historical standard. Tiger tails are a tool used to increase stop sign awareness, really to help improve compliance at those locations and to improve pedestrian safety, so that there isn't an expectation, there's an expectation from pedestrians that it's safe to cross, and this helps with that compliance. It also helps with non-residents in that area who aren't aware, potentially, that there is a stop sign at that location. They provide a positive guidance, which is a benefit to safety. So staff have reviewed the current standard, which has been, as I said, around for a long time. They are, stop signs are a regulatory sign, and they have to be either black on white or red on white. So I would agree that the color being used currently for our tiger tails is incorrect, shouldn't be orange, should be red on white, and we are updating the standard. In terms of our go-forward process from here, what we're looking to do is replace them, the current ones that are currently out there, the red, the red and orange ones, with the red and white, because the same issue still exists. We're trying to raise compliance at these stop signs. So what we'll be doing is going back, seeing where they're located, what the costs are in terms of changing them out, and we'll be slowly, as we move forward, replacing them. Any new locations where we would actually put these signs in will comply with the new standard.
Counselor Pauls.
Yeah, I just, I don't know if there's any in my area, and I haven't noticed, that's all, but I do notice, I think they are ugly, and I agree with you, so we should do something.
Well, you know, what started out was my just, like, what? Here's this beautiful green mountain and the trees, and all of a sudden these bright orange things right in the middle of my, and I went, "What?" And they're just ugly. And so my original presentation ends with, "Just how ugly do we want Hamilton to become by putting these all over the place?" But then, as I did my research, I started understanding, yeah, they are ugly, because they're only for construction. So, but you probably have some near you, they're going up, they've been going up everywhere. But, Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Mr. Soldo, which is, when this, my particular intersection was reviewed, and you can all read it in the materials I provided for you, Traffic Engineering's take was, "No problem." So why would you even replace ugly construction orange signs, tiger tails, with red and white ones?
I think the proper thing to do, because generally we don't allow questions to staff, but what we can do is add that as a six point.
I think it is the last question on that addendum.
I'll make sure that gets amended when we ask for it to be referred to, it'll probably go to Edward, or Dan, you have a comment on that?
Through you, Mr. Chair, thanks. And no, not specifically on the comment, I did want to take the opportunity, while Ms. Scott was at the podium, to thank her for this. I know in Public Works, we're going to get it wrong periodically, but it shouldn't take the amount of effort that Ms. Scott had to put into this to get our attention. So I want to apologize to her and thank her for all the effort that she put into it.
Well, fortunately, she's a good researcher, by the sounds of things.
I like learning stuff, so this has been good.
So I think what we'll do, then, we're going to add a six request, rather than have Edward answer this straight on today, make it in the staff report coming back, that if you're going to replace them with the red and white, black, red and white, is that necessary? I think that was the question that, the six walk-on question that the delegate had. And I see I have Counselor Jackson up here yet, and then Maria, Counselor Pearson, so Counselor Jackson.
Not for the delegation, after the delegation.
After the delegation, that's correct, okay. Counselor Pearson, the same, or do you want to, do you have a question for the resident?
Question to your amendment, Mr. Chairman, and that it's going to look at the replacement, but it's the replacement as far as this particular location, correct? Or all of them?
I think it's all.
We're going to look at all of them throughout the whole city? I certainly want to be involved in that, because I can tell you, yes, there's issues with tiger tails, but where I'm being requested them, I'm not getting concerns, but people want them, because just as Mr. Soldo said, there's people that don't even see the stop signs. I don't know what more to put on these corners. I have starbursts, I have tiger tails, and there's still running stops. But I want to be careful that if we have to change them, that's fine, but I want to be sure that we still have some avenue of more presentation on a stop sign.
Okay, so that's why, again, I think it's important, Edward, that we add a six request when we do the referral to you, to say, "Is it necessary to replace with red and white rather than black and red?" And we'll make that amendment, and I think Counselor Whitehead said he wanted to move it. So I have no more, oh, I do have some more now. Counselor Marula, to the delegate, a question to the delegate or for staff? Yeah, but he wanted to do it after the delegation was received.
Before it was received.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Your question to staff or for the delegate?
For the staff.
Okay, then let's get a motion then to receive the delegation, unless somebody else has questions for the delegation.
Okay.
Move by Counselor Nan, Ward Counselor, second by Counselor Powell, all in favor? Okay, thank you. So we will be debating a motion here in a couple of minutes to get the six items reviewed with the staff report back, but you could ask for delegation status again at that time.
Can I say one more thing?
Quick.
I would suggest.
To the microphone, please, so we can hear you.
Sorry. I would suggest, given the fact that staff have not in 14 months gotten back to this committee on the original Crown Point study, and the motion was, give it to staff and have them bring it back, that you put an end date in your motion for the timing that you want staff to get back to this committee.
Okay, thank you. So all in favor of receiving the motion? That's carried. Let's go back now to questions of staff. Counselor Jackson.
No, it's Marula, I think. I had my light, my mic on.
Counselor Marula, you need to push, you're on, okay, go ahead.
Okay, so just let me give some brief histrionics, because it was my motion with respect to the Crown Point delegation that led to the report that's outstanding at this point. So the first question should be, through you, Mr. Chairman, what is the, because it is obviously on the list of uncompleted projects or business that's outstanding.
Outstanding business, yes.
Outstanding business, so what is the actual projected date for completion of the report?
The completion of the installation of tiger tails?
No, no, from the Crown Point report that we're seeing.
Oh, okay.
The motion was, at the time, because I didn't.
Just get over to the microphone, Sam, so we can hear.
The motion was that staff assess the feasibility and the merits of all the concerns, and then report back to committee with respect to the feasibility and the merits, as well as cost associated with the initiative. So my question is, at this point, what's the status of that report?
Recommendations. Edward, do you want to take that?
Thank you. Through the chair to the counselor. Staff is finalizing that report. I'm going to ensure that it gets to front of this committee within the next couple of months.
Okay. And through you, Mr. Chairman, I think, just to put some context to this, the requests were numerous, very thorough, so in all fairness to staff, I think we need to incorporate the fact that the requests were numerous and very thorough. So through you, Mr. Chairman, can you recall, through you to whoever would like to answer this, how many requests were built into that presentation, which is quite considerable?
Edward.
Thank you. Through the chair to the counselor. I believe in the package that you have before you, there's a chart that has literally dozens of different areas that we need to review.
So, on the grand scheme of things, really the timeframe, although it might, from a layman's perspective, might seem like a lengthy period of time, it's actually within the reasonable timeframe for staff to report back, considering all the other pressures on the department. Another question, through you, Mr. Chairman, the fact that it doesn't meet the certain guidelines, is there a violation, is that considered a violation that can be penalized, or is it really discretionary that we can keep the existing tiger tails on these particular sites?
Edward.
Thank you. Through the chair to the counselor. The standard that we currently use is an older one. There is no set standard for tiger tail within the Ontario Traffic Manual, but it does provide us guidance in terms of colors. And as I mentioned earlier, regulatory signs, being the stop signs, are normally red on white or black on white, in this case. So any enhancements you make to the sign itself should be consistent with that color. So we will go back and look at, all the questions have been posed to us, the costs, and if there's a need, actually, to do those replacements in consultation of each of the local councils.
And through you, Mr. Chairman, I feel that there is no need, there is no need to do, replace anyone except this particular location. For whatever reason, that neighborhood has decided to want it replaced, and that still be it, but I can assure you that every stop sign and every tiger tail is attached with a petition, and I would say that in my area, over the last 20 years, that represents thousands of residents, and I have not had one complaint. So you just leave my tiger tails alone, is my point, and it's representative of the people that live there, and frankly, and honestly, want to come forward, which I haven't had a complaint to date, everything's working just as planned, so I appreciate your time. The other thing, too, that we need to take into account is that not only are they all community-driven stop signs, for the most part, that one of the most significant complaints that we receive, as you know, Mr. Chairman, is speed and non-compliance to these stop signs. So anything that contributes to compliance would be responsible, anything that contributes to the elimination, I think is irresponsible, considering the crisis that this city is faced with, with the fast, furious, and stupid behavior that we're seeing on these roads. So I stand by every single stop sign and every single tiger tail, and I'll continue acting accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Jackson.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate and thank Susie Scott and her neighbors for coming in, but, Mr. Chairman, some, very similar to Counselor Marula's opinions and thoughts, I don't want this get blown out of proportion. Up in my East Mountain area, I can tell you, I actually have more requests for tiger tails at intersections to highlight the need where children and families are crossing, and so I really, I see this as a site-specific, potentially neighborhood-specific matter and issue, and I just don't want this getting blown out of proportion. In fact, when Director Soldo talked about replacing, I can imagine the thousands upon thousands of locations, and what's the cost going to be to replacing the existing ones when there is no issues, again, from my standpoint, working closely with my constituents, having them as much engaged as possible. I respect what I heard today, but that sounds to me like it's site-specific, and now we want to take that site-specific issue and some concerns the residents had, justifiably, from their standpoint, and now we want to apply that across the whole city with either removal, replacement, not putting anymore, not installing anymore in the future. So I have a real issue with that, Mr. Chairman. It just concerned me when Director Soldo talked about that here is the plan from his department, there's the additional cost to taxpayers that we would have to counter with an argument as to why we're doing that. I can only imagine the type of reaction we may get from others, seeing tiger tails functioning and working well, I'll speak for my area, versus just replacing them with newer ones. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Whitehead. Oh, your second time, I'm sorry.
No, no, Mr. Chair, when you.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I was dealing with the delegation, now we're dealing with staff, right? Now, I don't know if you want me to move the motion at this point, we can still have certain questions and.
Just finish, I have two other speakers.
Okay, so I've got a couple of questions, and, and not to rain on any parade, but a lot of times, regulations and guidelines are provided for a reason and researched, you know, whether it's the police that have certain lights on their vehicles, or snowplows have certain lights on their vehicles, it seems to me that the guideline for the tiger tails was associated directly for the purpose of construction. So if that's the case, and we are now deviating from the original intent of the tiger tails for construction, I guess the obvious question then is, what does that do to that whole program with the heightened concern and alert for construction areas? So can I just get an answer? I would imagine the reason why they want something distinct for construction is because there's a higher level of sensitivity around construction areas. So can I ask, is there any concern that if we provide a plethora of these orange tiger tails in the city, what do we do around construction sites? And would we be concerned that it become, it would rode the response to these tiger tails?
Dan, or not Dan, I guess, Edward.
Thank you. Through the chair to the counselor. Sinage in construction zones should be orange, that is the guideline. I would say that this color scheme of red and orange tiger tails is actually not related to construction. It was a historical standard used to highlight the location themselves. So I don't have any concerns in terms of changing the standard to red and white, as per the OTM guidelines. I've heard lots of different input here as part of this discussion. The standard, what we'd like to do is change the standard moving forward to red and white, and we can have that discussion about when do they actually get changed. If the sign is currently in place and has no issues from an asset management perspective, it's still a good sign, we could change that sign when it's actually due for a replacement instead of going out and making those changes. So we'll take this, these comments back and report back at further date, later date.
So, Mr. Chair, maybe there's another way to ask the question. Is there a way that we can treat construction issues with another specific color code or match, so that that argument can't be made? So we still have a distinctive warning in construction zones, but it wouldn't conflict with what is currently taking place with these signs we have up?
Through the chair to the counselor. Construction zones are highlighted in orange across the province, that is the regulatory color that is used there. So we will continue to use orange in construction zones, and these signs really don't have a bearing or an impact on construction zones.
Thank you. And I hear you indicate that you have no concern about maintaining the tiger tail orange in light of the fact that they're primarily used for construction zones?
Through the chair to the counselor. In terms of moving forward, I prefer that we went to red and white for all new installations, but at present time, keeping some of them, if they are still of the proper condition, I don't have any concerns, because it still does the same thing. It does highlight that intersection.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I understand highlights, I think, like, we heard from my council colleagues, it's probably the most effective approach that we're taking today, or they wouldn't be requested at the degree R, so I'm not disputing that in any way. I think my concern is, is that the province has dictated the orange is specific to construction zones for a reason, so that it's clear that it's a warning of impending safety issues in a construction zone, and that's why they've co-opted the orange. What I'm hearing you say is, we will move forward with red and white or a different color match, but you don't have any concerns about maintaining the balance of the orange, even knowing, even though you know that it's primarily and regulated for the construction purposes?
And Counselor, I think that's the motion you're going to move, to refer to staff to report back specifically on that.
Yeah, I'm just looking for a response to that, if you can provide, I'm just confused on the response.
That's why we need a written report. So I think it's best that we wait until we get your report back, because that'll be the extra number six point that we'll make on Susie's request, is the installation of these tiger tails, do the current ones stay in place, do they get replaced, or do they simply come down? And I think that's the report that can be debated at a future date.
Fair enough.
Okay, so Counselor Danko.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to staff. When that report does come forward, Edward, I'd suggest that maybe some discussion be involved on standards and regulation versus warrants when we're talking about traffic control devices. Just a quick question about when there is a request for additional signage at a problem intersection, are the intersections reviewed as a whole, or is it just the signage that is reviewed? Specifically, in this instance, I notice that there's no, there's no crosswalk marking on the pavement, so I'm just wondering when we, when there is, you know, potential issue at an intersection, if we are looking at the whole intersection or just the signage?
Edward.
Thank you. Through the chair to the counselor. When we review these intersections, we review them in a holistic manner, where we're trying to determine what is the underlying issue, and then there are many tools in our toolbox that can be used to actually mitigate that issue. So it could be ladder crossings, it could be different signage, it could be the use of stop signs. So we do look at it from a very holistic approach, and come up with what is the most appropriate measure to put in place.
So when that report comes back, again, suggests that that's reiterated in that report, that it's a holistic approach to the whole intersection. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Pauls.
Yes, through the chair. I was wondering, like, I wasn't in council when they decided to do the tiger tails, but did you get a visual look before we made the signs? Because I would like to have a visual look, what black and white looks like, or red and white, before we say, "Go ahead." Was the visual look was done before?
I take fairness to Edward, he wasn't here either at the time.
Okay, but what was council aware?
Would you like that in the report that comes back, to bring a visual action?
Of course, I want to see what they look like. I would have never, like, I mean, I think they serve their purpose, and I understand that, but if you had looked at the visual, then you might have changed the color before.
Okay, we can get that as direction to staff, when they come back to the report, bring a sample of the two in, if you want to get a visual.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And so just for clarity, before I go to Counselor Whitehead for his motion, Edward, just at the intersection of Ballmore and Justin, which is Susie's and her neighbor's request today, will they be coming down, and will they be replaced with anything on that one specific intersection, just so we walk out of here knowing what's going to happen?
Thank you, through the chair. In terms of, or in light of the questions raised here, we'll report back to this committee and council in terms of moving forward, but if it's the wish of this committee, we can take those signs of that particular location down and replace them with red and white.
Okay, I'm going to refer then to Counselor Nan. Would you like that to happen? I believe you're the Ward Counselor, are you not?
There are a balance of issues here for this intersection, so yes, historically, the two-way stop sign has always been in place. The concern from other residents has been the impact for pedestrians, and as other counselors have mentioned, the increase of the tiger stripes has created a sense of safety and compliance from other residents in the neighborhood who feel like drivers now slow down and stop, or at least do a rolling stop. So from that perspective, I think I want to leave it to staff to do a final assessment, given that the Crown Point report does already indicate that the initial assessment by staff said that there was no issue, I'm going to leave it in staff's hand to do a final holistic assessment.
At this time, you don't want anything to change.
At this time, I do believe that those stripes need to be replaced to the ones that are red and white, to be in compliance. I would like to see our city be consistent in its application of tiger tails across the board, whether that needs to happen from a cost-saving initiative to make sure that it's done in a phased approach, I'm definitely in favor of that, but in terms of that intersection, I think we need to be in compliance with the need of that intersection, which is, initially, there was no problem identified. So from that perspective, I believe those tiger tails need to come down, but we need to have a holistic response to the pedestrian safety aspect.
Okay, just before you turn your mic off, I just heard two answers to the same question. One, you want them left up, and then at the very end, you said you want them to come down. This intersection, what would you like?
Is it like that, so I just get to choose on every intersection? Fantastic. So let's have them come down and have a report from staff about how to improve safety for pedestrians.
I don't think we need a motion, Edward, is that okay with you? Just at this intersection, you'll take the tiger tails down and then bring back a report for the whole city. Go ahead, Sam.
Point of clarification, there is no compliance issue. Again, so through you, Mr. Chairman, to staff, can you explain the difference between a warrant process, the warrants, as I'm glad that Counselor Danko mentioned it, versus just create a guideline? So we're not, we're not in a position where we're not meeting compliance, we're just simply not following.
And Sam, that'll all come back as one, I'm just trying to figure what we do with this specific.
Right now, we're communicating that we're not in compliance, when we are in compliance. So I just want.
I think we heard Edward say that already.
I know, but I'm just hearing again that we're.
Okay, Edward, can you say it again? Are we in compliance with the orange and black stripe?
In the Ontario, thank you, through the chair to the counselor. In a Ontario Traffic Manual, there are certain signs that must meet certain colors. Tiger tails are an enhancement, they are not regulated, they're not warranted, they are a guideline, so we are in compliance from that perspective.
Thank you.
And so, maybe for clarity, let's get a motion, as you said, I think you want to move it, Counselor Marula, on this intersection, just take the tiger tails down, at the request, my Counselor Nan, second to my Counselor Marula, do we need electronic vote on this? All in favor? And that's carried. Okay, so let's go back now, councillor Whitehead, you're going to make a motion on the staff report.
Yeah, and you had an additional item under the spy act here. So I just asked director to review the agenda regarding tiger tail, but based on the response to the questions raised, we'll report back to work with the spy. I think the sixth is--
Yeah, the sixth is that the current tiger tails in place, do they remain or do they be replaced?
I think we, well, we did a motion for that specific site.
We did. I want a macro motion.
Okay, so that'll be the, so questions raised in the addendum and staff to report back on whether, what, the feasibility of removing the tiger tail?
The current tiger tails, should they, can they be, remain in place or should they be the new red or black and white?
Getting that, clerks? Thanks.
Okay, so that's the motion, seconded by councillor Pauls. So discussion on it, I see none. So all in favor? That's carried unanimously. Okay, so let's move on then to item 8.2, which is the permanent closure and sale of a portion of a public unassumed alleyway abouting 256 Mary Street and 130 Barton Street, East and Hamilton. So as required under the city's bylaw number 14204, a public meeting is required. Notice of this meeting was provided and posted on the city's website. The notice advised that anyone whose lands are prejudicially affected by, may appear before the committee this morning. The clerk that has advised that there are no registered speakers to this matter. So to the public, are there any members of the public who wish to come forward to speak to this matter? And for a second time, are there any members of the public who wish to come forward to speak to this matter? And for a third and final time, are there any members of the public who wish to come forward to speak to this matter? Seeing none, can I have a motion to close the, the public meeting? Moved by Pearson, seconded by Pauls. All in favor? Does that have to be an electronic vote? Carried. Okay, so are there any questions from the committee on the report? If not, may I have a motion to approve the staff recommendation? Moved by Farr, seconded by Pearson, seeing no speakers, all in favor? Councillor Pearson, you haven't, and councillor Pauls, you haven't voted yet either. Okay, unanimous. So let's move on to 8.3, which is the permanent closure and sale of a portion of York Road between 501 York Dundas, York Road Dundas. So as required under the city bylaw number 14204, a public meeting is required. Notice of the public meeting was provided and posted on the city Hamilton's website. The notice advised that anyone whose lands are prejudicially affected by, may appear before the committee this morning. The clerk had advised that there are none registered to speak on this matter. So are there any members of the public in the audience today wishing to speak to this matter? And for a second time, is there any members of the public who wish to speak to this matter? And if for a third and final, 501 York Boulevard, York Road Dundas, anyone here wishing to speak to this matter? Okay, can I have a motion to close the public meeting? Moved by Vanderbeek, seconded by Pearson, all in favor? And that's carried. On the report, are there any questions or any discussions from the committee respecting the report? Seeing none, can I have a motion, a move and a second to approve the recommendation? Moved by Whitehead, seconded by, you should move it, and councillor Whitehead would second it. Seeing nobody wishes to speak to it, all in favor? Councillor Pauls? Councillor Jackson? Okay, it's unanimous. Okay, let's move, there are no staff presentations under nine, and so discussion items. This is Bill 65, automated speed enforcement. Is there any questions respecting item 10.1? You, there's nobody requesting to speak. Councillor Marula?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'm pleased that it's here before us, and this is a motion that I brought forward in conjunction with councillor Jackson and Collins. And as many are aware, we are faced with an epidemic on both the Red Hill and the Link when it comes to, to speeding. Now, hopefully, the province will see this as seriously as most people that live in the city see it as with respect to finding a solution to what is before us. And that solution is that there is a direct correlation between photo radar and the slowing down of traffic. And I know some people who argue that this might be a financial trap of some kind, or, and that's what's, that's what's motivating it, which is nonsense because it will be clearly visible in advance that the photo radar exists along that corridor. So that in itself diffuses any, any misunderstanding accordingly. And there is, and it's been proven scientifically, empirically, that there's a direct correlation between photo radar and people slowing down. And, and that in itself will save lives, particularly when we're dealing with the truck traffic that wasn't ever meant to be there, but I think many of us, and we were warned about it, is now becoming a shortcut for the, for the 400 series highways. The road is a local road and meant for local traffic only. I think the most significant problem with the road is now it's become a shortcut for those traveling from Michigan and using it to get onto the 400 series highways. We've tried over the years to, to, to look at potentially, and I think it's still a pending initiative that I brought forward regarding the, the truck tolls or out of, out of town truck traffic and how we can correlate that to tolling only out of truck, out of town truck traffic. I believe that also is a, is a report that's forthcoming down the road. But having said that, we, we understand one thing, that the road, if used as prescribed, is perfectly safe. And the problem is people are traveling, traveling at excessive speed. So it's about driver behavior and we know that, the police have said it clearly, that the reason, the number one reason is related to speed. So this speaks volumes about public safety issues. But clearly, and I'm not sure how many times I have to say this to people, because conspiracy theories are developed that something's wrong with the design of the road, that something's wrong with the, the pavement. It's amazing how people just don't look at themselves and realize that if you just simply travel the speed limit, that the probability is nothing's going to occur. And sometimes it's a lot easier to point fingers. You know, Tylenol, when used as prescribed, won't kill you, but if you take a full bottle of Tylenol, the probability of something tragic's going to occur. Same could be said about the speed limit, and particularly on this road. So we need to continually communicate that, but in the most part, for the most part, we need to enforce it because, as I mentioned earlier, we have a culture right now that didn't exist 10 or 15 years ago. And I can assure you that based on bringing forward this motion, the, the response from the community was overwhelmingly in favor with respect to this initiative. And I know that people want that stop, and people are avoiding the road because of how dangerous that road is and or perceived to be based on not the design of the road or not the pavement of the road, but because of the speed that people are subjected to, particularly the out of town truck traffic. So I'm hoping that the province sees the wisdom in this initiative. I look forward to their response in, in the affirmative, and I also hope that we can have an expedited response. If I can just ask one question, though. With respect to the legislation and what, and how it pertains to the road and speed limits, do we see any obstacle presently with respect to our request and what would be needed legislatively in order to have us be eligible for that particular road to have photo radar based on existing legislation? Through you, Mr. Chairman.
Edward?
Thank you, through the chair, to the councillor. The purpose of this report was to ask, get committee and council approval to ask the province to change the way that this legislation is actually enforced. In terms of the question posed by councillor and of being able to apply this tool on the roadway itself, we, we will have a report coming back in the future related to the eligibility of certain roadways, how it actually would be applied and where we would apply it. And council can make that decision at that time. In terms of the regulation that this was passed underneath, it was mainly focused on helping fight speeds in school and community safety zones. That was the target within the legislation. It's to help improve the compliance on roadways with speed limits below 80 kilometers an hour. That is clearly spelled out in the, in the act itself. And it's focused on reducing the frequency and severity of pedestrian vehicle collisions in urban areas. So when you look at those two criteria, they may not apply directly to the Red Hill Valley and the Link itself. It will be a council decision in the future on, in terms of would council want to change potentially the speed limit in order to be able to utilize this tool on the Red Hill Valley as a, as a tool. Thank you.
Okay. And just for those that are new, with respect to this community safety zone or school zone, the, the premise to that argument was based on the fact that we have, when Bishop Ryan was built on the mountain, we have inner-city and east-end kids being traveled or traveling by school bus and or HSR along the, the valley itself. So that's where the, the premise of that argument was developed. So thank you.
Councillor Danko?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just, so I'm clear here, there's kind of two separate subjects here. There's the question of photo radar on the Link and Red Hill as roadways with speed limits over 80 kilometers an hour. But the, the main thrust of this report is to request the province to move towards an administrative monetary penalty system for the fines versus using the court system. So my understanding from the report is that regardless of the answer from the province, as a city, we can still move ahead with photo radar in community safety zones. Is, is that correct?
Edward?
At the present time, there is a working committee in Ontario of a number of municipalities that are working through the logistics of actually implementing this. So right now, we don't have the ability to actually implement this as a tool until that has been sorted out. And one of the main stumbling blocks in terms of implementation is the use of the POA system versus the AMP system.
So we're going to find, we're going to have a result from the working group regards to how the fines are actually administered. And our position as a city is that that goes to the administrative monetary penalty system. Further on in the report, there's, it mentions that on completion of the working group review, that we are working on a plan to implement community safety zones. Is there a timeline for that and is the, the work on that ongoing?
Edward?
Thank you, through the chair, to the councillor. And running in parallel to the working group, we are doing our own due diligence internally, determining where these community safety zones potentially could be, what school zones would be identified. That is coming through our Vision Zero initiative and our road safety plan. So we're putting in place the background information we need to come back to council with once that these other stumbling blocks in terms of the POA versus AMPS gets resolved, we can come back and have a plan before you for consideration.
Thank you, and I just want to reiterate that how important traffic control and speeding enforcement in neighborhoods is. So I'm very much looking forward to identifying where the community safety zones are and what can be implemented there to make sure that traffic is calmed a little bit and make our neighborhoods a bit safer. Thank you.
Councillor Whitehead?
Thank you. I want to thank councillor Marula, Collins and councillor Jackson and their leadership on, on this issue. I want to say that for the longest time, there was some resistance for the consideration of photo radar because the, the pushback we get from the community in regards to it just being a tax grab. Well, we know it's an effective tool, as councillor Marula indicated, and it's a tool that its time has come. We cannot put a police person on every intersection and every roadway to address these bad behaviors, and so we're going to have to use technology to enhance the, the safety of our, and the well-being of our community. So in principle, I am all in in regards to using this, this tool and others in, in addressing this proliferation of speeding, not just on, as identified, the Lincoln Alexander and, and the Red Hill, but certainly within school zones, especially schools that are on Ontario roads. Regina Monday, for example, on Mohawk is problematic when you see the speeds, the average speeds there, and I'm sure that many other of my ward colleagues have schools are adjacent to, are very close to Ontario roads, is a problem. But it doesn't forego secondary roads where schools are either, like Linwood in Ward 8, which I was very familiar with the speeding and the traffic volumes that go in there. So I'm looking forward to that comprehensive report where we identify, you know, I guess we'll do it, maybe the question is, are we going to prioritize it like code one, two, three? Like, how are you going to, how do you envision the report coming forward in regards to identifying these community safety zones?
Edward?
Thank you, through the chair, to the councillor. We're just working our way through the implementation of this program here. What we'd like to do is focus on areas where there's the greatest risk in terms of the speeds themselves and the highest amount of non-compliance. So we'll be working through a priority listing of not only school zones, but also community, potential community, community safety zones as we, as we move forward.
So you're going to take a triage approach to the, the issue, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. And the last question I have that was mentioned, I, I don't know, maybe it's already been done. If it hasn't, is it, it'd be too much to, to do, but I'd be really curious and interested, and I agree with councillor Marula again, and it's happening more often than, and it's not unusual, that I agree with him. The truck traffic on the Red Hill and the Lincoln Alexander is significant, and I don't know what and if we've done recent counts on the truck traffic. Is that readily available? Are we in the process of doing it? Do we have something current?
Thank you, through, through the chair, through the councillor. We are in the process of reviewing that matter. We're, we've, have taken recent counts on both the Link and the Red Hill, and we're trying to determine a methodology in terms of determining where the trucks are coming and going in terms of both of those facilities. It is not an easy task determining if they're cut through traffic or their local trucks do have the ability and the right to deliver supplies within the city. So we're just working our way through the methodology of determining how much of that traffic is cut through versus traffic that's serving the businesses.
What's great is we have the, the cameras on both the Red Hill and the Link, and we can track the, I would hope that we could track the license plates of the trucks through the computer software, and if they go from one end and through right on to the 403 on the other end, and I think you got your answer. So you're saying it's challenging, I'm trying to understand, I believe, because I was up there and I, I can see how that new technology could be utilized for very unique projects. Do we have the, the ability through the current software and hardware that we have with the camera system to track the truck license plates that go from one end through, to the other?
Thank you, through the chair, to councillor. The current system does not do that for us. It isn't a tracking software. While it may record the software, it would still need to be manually looked at, so that is actually quite, quite time-consuming. So we're just trying to determine a better methodology of determining the, the answer for the question there.
I appreciate, so, and, and in that report, would we, be any suggestions upgrading the software, because the hardware's already in place, to enable us to do better tracking? Do you, do you see that potential coming forward?
I'd have to get back to you on that, councillor.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. And the truck traffic that we currently have on the systems, can we at least get an updated, well, report or even an email to each of the councillors, what the current truck loads are regardless of whether they're internal or external to the, the city that are utilizing the Red Hill and the, the Link? So we get a, a context of the problem? Thank you.
Okay. So councillor Danko, could you just take the chair for one second, and I'll come to you, councillor Jackson? I see you just popped up there. Edward, can you just explain the difference to me between POA, I think we all know what that is, and administrative monetary penalty system? Because you're saying you could get up to 11,000 hits at each local--
Because you're saying you could get up to 11,000 hits at each location per day. So can you explain to me how, what the differences between the two systems? Thank you. I'll try. In terms of POA, provincial offenses, they're laid under, for charges that are underneath provincial statutes and municipal bylaws, largely made up of traffic matters. Provincial offenses are not crimes in the process that, but the process that is utilized and through the POA really is a court-based process. It requires significant court and law enforcement resources to follow through on the POA process. And we're identifying, I believe, it was 13,000 per location. That volume would overwhelm the court system. Just to give you a number here, approximately 1.65 million provincial offenses were laid last year in Ontario. That's quite significant. And adding 13,000 per location at every speed camera would be quite significant across the province. So the Ministry of Attorney General has been exploring an online administrative penalty system for particular charges like this one here. It's more of a civil process, which provides a mechanism for ensuring compliance with regulatory requirements. The monetary penalty is assessed, and then it's imposed in terms, in the form of a notice with a prescribed date and time for payment. It does not lead to any convictions, and so it can, it can be dealt with without a court hearing itself. So that's the main thing. The POA requires a court hearing, while the administrative monetary penalty system is a more of an online system. So if someone wants to say, hey, I wasn't driving the car that day, or I was away that day, who would they appeal to then? Like, right now, you walk into the POA offices and meet with an adjudicator. Do you go and meet with a staff person then from the city? Thank you. I don't have the particulars, but there is an appeal mechanism as well through the AMPS process. It is currently being used, currently being used for some other charges. But there is an appeal process that you would go to another hearing officer, I believe. Do insurance companies get notified? Insurance companies would not. Because they don't know who the driver is? I'd have to get back to you. I don't have an answer. I'd have to ask legal. Is the red light cameras an administrative system? Or is that POA? Currently, the red light camera is also POA, and we're asking that both the speed cameras and red light cameras be transferred to the AMP process. Okay. Still not clear in my mind what the difference is between the two. And it sounds like you're not sure yet either, Edward, what the difference is between the two, but it's what the provincial oversight committee is considering. Have I got that right? The main difference between the two is one is a court-based process, one is an online And just all of our parking currently, all of our parking infractions currently go through AMPS as well. Oh, so be, from the public's perspective, because I'm sure the media will be reporting this tomorrow, it'd be very similar to where your parking tickets handle? Ryan, maybe you want to answer that? Let's take a step up.
Mr. Chair, I just thought I would add that that is, the administrative penalty system is the way we currently deal with parking tickets, parking infractions.
So the infraction would go to the vehicle owner, not necessarily the driver?
That is correct. And they do have a screening process. They go over to 80 Main across the street, and they can plead their case as necessary. And then it can get elevated to a hearing.
So they go to the same place you would for a parking ticket now?
That's correct. Well, I can't comment on the automated speed enforcement, where they would go, but there is a precedent in the city for AMPS.
I hope when you bring this future report back, Edward, you can answer those questions. But, and you know, the other questions that before, remember Mike Harris came to power because he said he'd get rid of photo radar. And so it's not popular, although I certainly understand where the people who support it like it because of the carnage just currently happening on our streets, and it overwhelms our police resources also to do enforcement. But I would like to know where they're going. Are they permanently installed like red light cameras? Or do they like the province's system where it used to be a vehicle parked on the side of the road, and they'd move it every day? What's the trip speed? Is it, if you're in a 60 and 50 kilometer zone, and you're driving 51, is a trip an issue of fine, or is there a 10-kilometer variance? Do you have the answers to those questions now, Edward, or will that be in your future report that comes back? Those are all the details we're currently working through and would be as part of the report that we would present to community and council. Okay. So just in closure, I just feel a touch uncomfortable supporting this now because there's a lot of unanswered questions yet. And before we go forward to this, I would like those questions answered. So I don't think I can support this today until we get those questions answered. So I'll take the chair back. And I see Counselor Jackson has left, so I have no further speakers. Okay, so the motion is, the report, recommendation is moved by Counselor Marula, seconded by Counselor Whitehead, and all those in favor enter post. So Madam Clerk, if you hit no, it doesn't show it on the screen. It just shows that you voted. Okay, so it carries on a vote to 10 to 9, then?
Nine to one.
Oh, nine to one. Okay. Oh, okay. Okay, so the motion's carried. So let's move on now to 10.2, Standardization of Provision of Support, Maintenance, Repairs and Parts. Is there any discussion on report 10.2? Seeing none, any motion to report support, staff recommendation moved by Pearson, seconded by Collins. All in favor? We're still waiting for some people to vote. You're voting on item 10.2, the standardization. Okay, and so that's carried. Let's move on then to 11.1, Water Drinking Fountain for Kenneworth Stairs. Counselor Marula, would you please introduce your motion respecting the water drinking fountain for Kenneworth Stairs?
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Collins. Whereas the Kenneworth Stairs are located in Ward 4 and correction, N Ward 6, rather than Luigi Ward 7, are a key part of the active transportation network that moves pedestrians and cyclists through our community and safely up and down the escarpment. And whereas access for a water drinking fountain at this location has been requested by residents, therefore be it resolved, the staff be directed to install a water drinking fountain at the bottom of the Kenneworth Stairs to be funded from the Ward 4 area rating reserve account at an amount not to exceed $45,000. And that the mayor and city clerk be authorized and directed to execute any required agreements and ancillary documents, which such terms and conditions in a form of satisfactory to the city solicitor.
Discussion on it, Counselor Whitehead.
Well, I'm so wholeheartedly supportive. I remember the request we had on the Shid Oak stairs, which is a very active stairs on the west mountain. And in fact, we do have a request because we do have a fountain. And the fountain, I'm hoping, will have the ability to refill bottles because what I noted is that that is the new standard that people appreciate because a lot of them are now carrying stuff, you know, the plastic bottles or all the other problems you have with fountains, they have the ability to refill the bottles. I hope that that's the standard we're looking at. But it's been very successful at Shid Oak, and I appreciate staff's effort on that as well.
Counselor Marula?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thanks, Counselor Whitehead, for bringing that up. It's also going to be pet-friendly for dogs as well, so I guess cats and.
A little.
Walking your cat.
That's right. Counselor Danko.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There was a question raised by a member of the public about the appropriateness of assigning area rating funds while that policy is still under review or in flux right now. Does clerks have a position on that?
We know that they spoke with staff ahead of time. Financed.
Yeah, just for clarity, I did consult with staff about Counselor Farr's notice of motion that's coming forward, and he's going to change the funding source. But I believe this is, could be, also be infrastructure because it's a water line that's going to be installed. That's why I never questioned it. It has to be infrastructure to come from area rating fund. Counselor Marula?
Just for clarity, purposes in all the years that I've, I've been focused on that program, it's always been capital for me. So in essence, I'm proudly standing today before this particular motion, which meets the criteria beyond comprehension. It actually is a poster child of the area rating program that I helped develop. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
It's a good question because we've got some, some, just a lot of good questions about what area rating is being used for. You know, Movie Night, I know is one that's been eliminated now coming out of area rating. But I believe since this is a water line, it could be argued it's infrastructure. But just on that case, how the heck do you spend $45,000 to put a fountain in? I built a house for less than that.
Through, Mr. Chair, the, my understanding is we're looking at about, I think, 100 meters of water line. So the restoration just alone to get the water line to this location is going to be considerable.
It'd just be a little half-inch pipe, wouldn't it, Dan?
We'd have to take a look at it. I suspect a three-quarter or one inch probably for that.
One inch for a little water fountain?
Well, it's 100 meters long service, so we're going to have to, we'll have to figure that out, but at least a three-quarter, I would think.
Okay. I think Counselor Marula being a little generous here, $45,000, but it's an area rating fund, so we'll let it go. So. They put plastic in now for the stuff, too. Okay, so let's go, let's have a vote on this. I see, oh, Counselor Pauls.
Yes, I just, through the Chair, I hope this passes because I had a couple of requests already on Concession Street, they need a couple of fountains. So if this doesn't pass, then mine won't either. So let's pass it. Thanks.
Okay. Counselor Pearson.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, and certainly a tweak there, and I appreciate staff clarifying the size of the pipe. But is there also going to be a sewer or drain that's going to have to be at that location as well? So that work will also be part of the scope?
It goes in the dog tray.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We'll have to take a look at that. I don't know for certain whether or not it'll require a drain, but all these things can add up very quickly.
Thank you. I will support it, though. Thank you.
Okay, so we're back to the vote now. All in favor? That carries. Let's move on to 10.2. Counselor Marula, this is the cannabis packaging.
Can you take that, my mic off?
Hit your button. No, hit your.
Just a bug in the boi, I mean, I think there's a bit of a delay in regards to seeing how the vote went. So if that could be tweaked, that'd be great. So I don't get to see the results, and there's a delay before the results come up.
And the clerks, Alicia?
So in the vote progress screen, you're seeing the names going from red to green. That indicates that members have entered a vote. It doesn't indicate how they voted until I close the vote here, and then you're seeing this.
Yeah, so I'm just talking about the delay of seeing.
The delay was because Counselor Jackson had voted because he left the building. So I think by the time Alicia got a hold of that and saw there was no vote coming, she pushed the exception button. Okay, Counselor Marula, 11.2.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Collins, on cannabis packaging, recycling and waste control. Whereas the federal government has legalized cannabis use in Canada, whereas consumers can order cannabis online for direct delivery or pickup at legal dispensaries, and whereas cannabis comes in potentially recyclable material, therefore be it resolved, staff be directed to work with the Waste Management Advisory Committee to determine the types of packaging being utilized by vendors for the sale of legal recreational and/or medicinal cannabis, and report back to the Public Works Committee with that report to include whether or not those materials are recyclable and the cost associated for recycling or disposal of those materials at a landfill. And just briefly, this is self-explanatory, but again, it's just another form of downloading potentially and not put into the equation with respect to the windfall the province and the feds are going to experience from the sale of recreational cannabis at the expense of municipalities. So this goes a long way in not only identifying the problem, but working with our Waste Management Advisory Committee to establish whether or not it is problematic firstly, and secondly, what solution can be presented. Because clearly, some of the material, particularly the plastic, the black plastic containers, are not recyclable. So they definitely need to reassess it, and I appreciate it.
Great motion. Okay. I see no, any requesting to speak, so all in favor? Okay, you can flip it now. Votes 10 in favor, zero opposed. Okay, let's move on to 11.3. Did you have a second to that motion? Okay. Counselor Farr, your motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Start with Part A. I need to make an amendment on the second to last line. It says Ward 2 area rating reserve account, it should be discretionary account, and then the account number would change from what's before us to 3301809200. And that amendment would be seconded by Counselor Nann.
Okay, all in favor of the amendment? I think we have to do electronic vote on it, don't we? It won't let me vote. Would Counselor Farr get me a ban from voting on this, or?
I was, yeah, I'm going after unanimous.
Okay. Well, I'm trying to do it, but it won't let me do it. But let's assume it's carried. So let's go back to the main motion, then go ahead, Counselor Farr.
Whereas there was interest from Ward 2 citizens to beautify the 34 concrete planters along the west side of James South with Hamilton winter plant material, whereas the installation of the above-noted plant material will additionally reduce litter accumulation during the winter months, and whereas the installation of winter plant material occurred December 6, 2018, therefore be it resolved that the cost for the installation and removal of winter plant material and the concrete planters on the west side of James South, Hamilton, in the amount of $5,000, be funded from the Ward 2 area rating discretionary account 3301809200, be approved, and be that the mayor and the city clerk be authorized and directed to execute any required agreements and ancillary documents with such terms and conditions in the form satisfactory to the city solicitor. And that's seconded by Counselor Nann as well.
Okay, any discussion on it? And just for the purposes of clarity, I know Counselor Danko raised this before, clerks tell us that discretionary funds are okay to be used for this type of thing. So we're fully in compliance. Okay, so all in favor? Okay, so let's move on now to notice the motions. Anybody have any notices of motions? Seeing none, general information. So there is one amendment to the outstanding business list, which is the photo radar on Lincoln Expressway. I need a motion to, I guess, remove this from the outstanding business list. You'd like to move that? Moved by Counselor Nann, seconded by Counselor Collins. All in favor? And that's Counselor Whitehead and Counselor Vanderbeek, can you vote? And Counselor Farr. Okay, so that's carried. There's move, now I just need a motion to adjourn. All in favor? It's moved by Pearson, seconded by Vanderbeek. So we're adjourned. Thank you. Oh, Andrew, I was hitting my name, not the yes. Al D'Angelo, I was hitting my name, not the S.